Use the good knowledge that we need to. Do you pray in the most precious name?
Amen.
All right, our next item on the agenda is to approve our minutes of the regular meeting made on twelve twenty twenty one, special meetings of April ninth twenty twenty one, and April sixteenth twenty twenty one. You've all had those minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes presented? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Crumell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, our next item on the agenda is the audit report. The next item we have is treasury.
Pissed up.
Okay, we'll come back to it. The next item is my line items. I have a Peterborough EMS report for March of twenty twenty one. They had six dispatchers within the city, five transports, one non-transport, and five billable runs. They had two dispatchers outside the city limits, one transport, one non-transport, one billable run. For a total of eight dispatchers, six transports, two non-transports, and six billable runs. And for March of twenty twenty one, they show a total revenue of five thousand two hundred forty-nine point two three, and a total expense of nine thousand eight hundred five point two six, for a difference of the negative four thousand five fifty-six point oh. Do I hear a motion that we approve the Peterborough EMS report as presented? Motion made by Commissioner King.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any question? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right, the next item is to nominate and appoint members of the Hell County Historical Commission for a term ended December thirty first twenty twenty two. Phyllis, you want to come up and present the list? You just want me to read the list, or what are you going to do?
Well, just maybe at that point, so I'll just pass it. I mean, I think it's, it should be about the same. But yes. Maybe. And then the precincts.
We'll just go over it together. She showing for twenty twenty one, Hell County Historical Commission Board Member 閣 city appointees. You did city appointees, county appointees, and then at large?
At large, yes. And the city ones, they're all, those are by precinct, but it's mainly within the city limits within your precincts.
Okay, and all of them have agreed to serve?
Yes, except for the Aberdeen Peter's, number two, and we're still working on it. We had a person, and she's having surgery, so she had to bow out, but we'll continue to work on that one in, if you're from that area.
Yes, sir.
So if you have any suggestions, that would be great.
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'll just go ahead and read them by city, by county precinct. One would be Nick Logan, two would be Pam Melvin, three would be Kim Crossway, four would be Susan Bartley. County precinct, one would be Diane Martinez, number two would be the vacant physician, number three would be Dee Rice, number four would be Susan Flippin, and then at large would be Alice Lockerbie. She would serve as the treasurer out of precinct four. Melinda Brown would serve as the secretary. Keon Horn would serve as the vice president, she's out of precinct three. Phyllis Wall would be the president, also living in precinct three. Lisa Harris would be the historian out of precinct four. Cynthia Patterson would be the historian out of precinct three. Melissa Gonzalez would be the historian, and Jeff Johnson would be the city representative out of precinct four. All right. You've seen the list. Do I hear any, I guess, further recommendations? No, no other recommendations at this time, so do I hear a motion to approve this list that's presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. We'll go back after your item.
Sorry, I was in third quarter. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I have several items, and I'm going to start with the financial report. I have the financial report for the month, it'd be March thirty first twenty twenty one. The monthly closing balance was twenty-four million one hundred fifty-five thousand seven seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents. I hereby certify that this report is true and direct, and will be placed in the minutes.
All right, you've heard the report provided. Do I hear a motion to accept this financial report to begin the March thirty first?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Crumell. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Okay, Judge, my next item is my affidavit stating that the court has received, reviewed, and approved the financial report to be placed in the newspaper. And I think my candidate with the, it's just a one-page?
Note to.
Okay, it's the affidavit just stating that the court has received, reviewed, and approved, and I'll just try to sign that for me.
Okay, you've heard the request for, to approve the affidavit for the publication of this report, and I hear a motion that we approve it. Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, Judge, my next item is the financial statement. This is for the quarter ended March thirty first of twenty twenty one, and, sorry, my project's getting blurred here. The monthly closing, I'm sorry, the quarter interest earned for the first quarter of the year was seven thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Thank you all, ma'am.
Number three, sir. On the second paragraph, I have twelve million dollars in investments, and I've earned seven thousand three hundred ninety-nine eleven. Now, just for the record, because I get phone calls and questions, you know, we fall under the PFIA, which is the Investment Act, and we cannot invest like the normal investors, you know, so I just want to state that we have to be very safe, and our main concern is liquidity, so I just want to state it every first of the year, because I know it's not been good, it has not been good at all for us.
There for a while, it was getting better.
It was getting better.
And then it turned back on us.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you've all have been, heard item of the quarterly investment report. Do I hear a motion to approve this quarterly investment report?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Crumell.
Judge, I'll abstain.
Okay, are there any other questions about the report? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Showing Harold is abstaining. All right.
Okay, that's all I have, Judge. Judge, on a side note, I would just like to tell the court, we are, we started being audited in twenty twenty, and two weeks ago, and it's going really well, so we should be reporting to y'all, we should be reporting to y'all hopefully soon.
Is it still mainly on, just, are they on site, or are they doing?
They're on site, no, they're not on site, sir. We are doing it all through the internet.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda this morning is from the sheriff's office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item this morning is personnel. This is Virginia Sausado, long-term employee, has been moved to jail sergeant from a group thirteen, step eighteen, to jail sergeant, group fourteen, step eighteen, went from an hourly rate of nineteen fifty-five to twenty fifty-five.
When was that effective?
That was effective four eighth of twenty twenty one.
Okay, so you've heard the request to promote Virginia Sausado, effective April eighth twenty twenty one, from May, position of thirteen point eighteen, which was nineteen fifty-five per hour, to the position of sergeant at a fourteen eighteen, which is twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. Do I hear a motion to approve this, this request?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Crumell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, Virginia's been there for a long time.
Oh, she's been there. My next item is we plan to replace an air conditioner in the middle, new part of the jail. Air Dunn-Right Mechanical is replacing it, they've replaced the natural force at a cost of eight thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. Got a five-year compressor, forty-one-year-old parts, two years' old labor. They by far are coming in with the best prices right now, beginning down. And that's for running all the handguards, reconnecting plumbing, gas lines, electrical open, it's a naked, a naked, before we moved last time, and it seems to be. And if possible, get this paid for out of buildings and grounds. Is that correct, Lorena?
This can be asked for on Monday eleven.
Monday eleven. So pay for it on Monday eleven.
So you've heard the request of the air conditioner purchase from Air Dunn-Right in the amount of eight thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve this request? And pay for it out of the final letter. A motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second? All right, second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
My last item is, we have three neighbors, Domingo, Sausado, Jonathan Velez, and Angela Garcia. Tico changes her rules about carrying power-up or trailer transporting. They have to go to a three-day class now, they have to qualify with that power before they can transport with the power. To get their license, which is, all three of them, it's at a cost of a hundred and five dollars. We did this here a while back, we sent two or three of them, got them certified. What I'd like to do at this point is, I would like to pay for this out of my budget, so, because we're utilizing that license and everything, and if so, make this, they have it, I guess, when we send some more, so I don't have to look at it and just go ahead and pay for their license in the future.
That's a hundred and five each?
No, a hundred and five dollars total.
Thirty-five each?
Yeah, thirty-five each. Tico makes them go through this class, but then they have to pay Tico to get the license.
Where do they do the class?
We do it at the sheriff's department. It's a two-day, we usually do it Thursday and Friday, and then they go out Saturday and shoot. And this is to allow them to transport and make sure they're powered.
Okay, so you've heard the request to pay this fee for power-up certification in the amount of a hundred and five dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Crumell. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any other discussion?
No, he was wanting to make this like a recurring.
Recurring deal. Just we'll send some more.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, my next, or the next item on the agenda is county clerk.
Good morning.
All troops, there are any?
This is the court this morning, the lease on my mailing machine is issued to run out, so I'm requesting a, for sixty months, five years, with fifty bucks, will be a new machine, a new mailing machine, and it is, there it is, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents every quarter, and that is eighty-nine dollars and sixteen more than the quarter that I'm paying now. I'm paying seven seventy-four fifteen, and I pay that out of machine maintenance, and I believe I've got enough money in there that I can make up that difference during the next two quarters.
And so they'll just come and pick up the truck.
They'll have.
And then bring this in.
Yes, they'll come and pick it up, and then bring it in.
Do I hear a motion to approve this lease agreement with fifty bucks for a mail machine for the county clerk's office, for a quarterly pay of eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents? Do I hear a motion to approve that? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Crumell. Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Patrice?
Yes, sir.
And would you mind adding to your motion to allow me to sign this, a lease agreement?
Okay. I've got it right here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The next item we have is the district clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, first thing I'm on for, let me tell you one thing, the SA for the virus protection, I'm on the table now, I'm not, I'm talking to Tyler to make sure that that's the best one for us still, so I just want to take that. But what I want to start with are the telephones for the camps, for all of, all of, all the offices, all the departments in, of two of the precincts, and not jumping three, because they, I don't know for sure what you're on, but they're on South Plains, and this is with Texas, and I have guests, and it's Melissa Early and Glenn Roberts, and they are who I've been working with for the phone system. Our contract for our phones are, it's out, it's been out for a while, so we need to take care of that, and so I talked to the judge, and he had said to check with, because I know we're having so many issues with the phones, and it is Toshiba, it's no longer, it's no longer a company, their support has stopped, so it's time for us to replace our phones, and they're sixteen, some of them are seventeen years old, so we've had them quite a while. The plan that we're looking at, and I have talked to Jim, the plan that we're looking at is to lease the phones, and because when you, a phone goes out, we would have to buy another phone to replace it, they would have to bring it, and, you know, some added expense there, so the best deal for us is just to lease the phones, and they are voice-over IP called VoIP, VoIP, right? And they run on the internet, so there's a big savings on our fees and everything, so, let me see, what else? So, let me go with, the phones run thirty-five dollars a month, they have given us twenty-five dollars a month, we have about a hundred, we, when I counted, you know, I went through each office, and I went to each office and counted, but we figured out between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and sixty phones, so we want to set our contract at a hundred and sixty, knowing that it probably will go down, okay? So it's, it comes up to our, and we're going to go ahead and renew our internet contract, since they do run on that, and we are, our internet contract is good, but so that they both can do it at the same time. It is a five-year contract, and Jim, what he did add was the non-appropriation clause, because it's five years, you'll probably know about that, but he said, since it's five years, he wanted them to, he to sign this. So, all right, so it's seven thousand dollars a month for the phones, okay? We kind of padded it, planning on doing this, and Linda checked, and she felt like that we did have the money to finish up the year at seven thousand a month, and so we feel like we do have the money to do that, and that is phones and internet, okay? Not just phones, it's phones and internet. So I guess I need, we need to vote on that first, for asking questions or whatever, I said questions or?
Go ahead. Do I hear a motion to approve the leasing? This hundred and sixty phones, at a cost of twenty-five dollars per phone, plus internet, that is added two gifts, for a monthly fee of seven thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Motion made by Commissioner King.
Do I hear, do I hear a second? Is that a second? Second by Commissioner Daniel. Okay, now questions for Carl, our, our visitors.
Will our calls go where they're supposed to go now?
Yes. We are, that's going to be the next part, but yes, they will, they should.
So.
Because we're going to change out all of that, you know, that's part of the setup and everything, we're going to change out a lot of the switches, models, and everything.
I've always said, since I've been in an office in the office, about eighty-five percent of the phone calls, they're from, or some other.
If you talk to every office up here, they'll claim they're the switchboard.
They're the switchboard, that's right, and we claim that in our building too, so.
But I do know that our phones are desperately of change, because most of the time I have to use my cellphone, because it's more reliable.
And these are Polycom, and they're really nice, they're very, very.
Durable?
Really, really cool things, yeah. And if they, right, we call them, and they, you know, by leasing them, they just come and replace them. We're still doing your, we're still renewing your contract, but you don't have fiber yet. Suck y'all in, next time y'all get fiber, suck you in.
We're trying, we're trying.
Well, Carl, I appreciate you getting all this together. Appreciate y'all being here today.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Okay, the next thing is to make these phones work, and this building is probably, this building in the jail, if you think about it, it's the oldest wire in the county for us, so in most, I can tell you that in this building, I've got little switches that like three computers will be plugged into, we can't do that now, because we'll have those, we'll need a wire to go into the phone, and a wire to go into the computer, so we need to rewire the jail, the courthouse, the tax office, what else? There's a few, and then Deborah, the indigenous elf, and we're going, wherever they're at, in same amount, they're calling, they call it draws. And so they're going to, you know, when we did that in this building, what we did was identify every wire, this time now, they're going to come in, and they're going to replace those wires, and same as at the jail, so we're going to replace a lot of the wiring there. So, you ready to sit down? And this is out of permanent improvement, and the total for all the, all three buildings, the courthouse, is that right? Yeah, okay, I said jail, the jail, the annex, the tax office, and if there's any, you know, individual ones, we kind of padded in a little bit, so if there's a desk where it needs a phone that doesn't have a computer draw wire, can't buy wire, we'll have to do one there, but the total is twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars, and that's really, really good for all these buildings.
And you visited with all that, and we have.
Yes, and she said it would come out of permanent improvement. Is that fine, whatever? And I did check on that.
All right, so you've heard the request to replace, redo the wiring for the jail, the courthouse, and the tax office annexed building, at a cost of twenty-four thousand two forty-two. Do I hear a motion to approve that, unless we come out of final, let it permanent improve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Crumell. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, did we send in the first one for you to sign the contract?
No.
Okay, could we add that to that?
Okay.
And the reason there's so many is because I tried to have wind office, August, in divided amounts, so it's easier for us to, than the camp, so I'm sorry that we've got thirty thousand of, of the news.
Who approved the first? Y'all, y'all agreed to add the addition to allow me to sign the contract? Any discussion? Chris?
Yes.
All right, thank you guys so much.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing is the sound system in the two district courtrooms. And, uh, we got, and we did add that into, uh, at budget time. We did talk about that. We added extra into the, uh, or we're supposed to add extra for that. Probably not as much as this came up to, but we did add extra. Um, I got it, the person who put the sound system in the building at the very beginning was Lovett Sound and Equipment Company. And that is who we talked to. And he's going to use, you know, geek stuff, but he is also going to replace, um, a lot of stuff. Um, in each courtroom, the crandall powder amp, uh, a mixer. And they're doing wireless mics, uh... And then both, the projectors in both courtrooms have gone out. And they use them a lot there, so that is also being replaced. And that comes up to nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents per courtroom. Uh, permanent improvement. And that's where we put it when we were at budget time. I don't know that I put that much though. I would say that, I didn't expect that brass. I just wanted to be before the, next two.
Okay, so you've heard the request to, uh, replace the sound system and other media items in all courtrooms at a cost of nineteen thousand, one eighty-seven, ten per courtroom, which is a total of thirty-eight thousand, three seventy-four twenty, uh, to be paid out of permanent improvement. And so, and you visited with Melinda for money in permanent improvement for this?
Yes. Now, have visited with the district judges. I would like to, you know, I would say that after I show this to them, if there's something they don't like or do like or whatever, you know, that they don't like, and they would like to do it different, I will come back, but, you know, right now, I think we love it.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve this, uh, this request to purchase these, this sound system and other media, uh, I guess media equipment?
Yes.
From Lovett Sound at a cost of thirty-eight thousand, three seventy-four twenty. Do you hear that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Crumell. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm glad you were taking the day.
I know, I'm sure glad, I said it earlier. All right, thank y'all.
Okay. Next item on your agenda, constable one.
Yeah. Um, I'm, uh, here with questions. Uh, one of them is body cam, uh, dash cam. And it's an officer now who are scrutinized as the neighbor on how we protect ourselves and others over a competitive or a property subject. Body more cameras and vehicle dash cams significantly reduce, uh, increase transparency. Those serving enhance relationship trust with local community and shield the department and the county from false acci- accident, accu- accusation and misconduct. Help with liability. These items would address these needs in, uh, this office and the needs of the citizens as well. One of the items is a martel voice grade, uh, body more camera. I looked it up, they're some cheaper, but this one has no contracts. Monthly storage fees or annual, uh, support contract are hidden software license. Uh, it's four ninety-nine ninety-nine. Uh, I can read y'all this text to it. One button recording. Uh, it, it is compatible with computers I have here to download. Reason I mention that, uh, constable three had loaned or switched a vodka cam system over to our, this office transferred it. I don't know how good it is, but it will not work on this. And there's no programming. I can get online and find it. He turned that over and I don't know, like I said, how good it is or anything else. I can record with it. It's got a real short record life. It's on all the batteries are died, and of course it's built in battery. But it's worthless. I can use that a couple of ways on these evictions and stuff. For a liability, I need to go in and record everything on the move out before the landlord are allowed to move it out. And then afterwards to show that it wasn't all the gold left in there or anything. Then, I'm looking at a next base dash camera. It's, it's not voice grade. Voice grade is wired into the vehicle, has to be carried over here, the radio, shock and stuff. And it's expensive. And that part is expensive. These, they're using in trucks, Walmart trucks and everything else. This is more for, for a county vehicle, it's a lot of that and stuff. It's like three ninety-nine on the, it's got high quality. Uh, it's, it's another one that's simple like body cam or download, runs off load. Can't be downloaded, you can't, you know, put on a desk or whatever. Oh, and it's also, it's a plug, it's like, it, it's going to mount for the dash and it can be moved from one vehicle to the other by me and not a radio shop. And it can be set up with, with a cigarette plug. It can turn on the car if it's hot, it should have come on every time the car is hot. Then... Like it has a taser, uh, the taser, some com- some compact stun gun. It's a lot more expensive than a cartridge, but it's, uh... It does neither exceed law enforcement standard and military standard. It is smaller, it's not as big as a X-26 or the Pope, uh, the seven, seven. Same, uh, uh, same as though, you're unfamiliar with the taser. It's non-lethal. If everything is going on now, the de-installation classes, the crisis intervention classes, mandatory by the state, it'd be nice to have some non-lethal. Then also the holster, forty-five fifty. But it is smaller. Jake, it'd be good for court. Even Judge Pinker, they're not the happiest people on earth. So I'll buy it all away from my head. I don't know what's in the trailer. Uh, taser is, uh, three forty-nine ninety-five. The holster, forty-five fifty. The holster, is that right? Forty-five fifty. I am arguing, I'm arguing. No, I'll watch something. One minute, the rest of it's sitting.
At one point it was.
What was the total of all of it?
Total on all of it is twelve nine five thirty-three.
And do you have that amount in your budget, Tommy?
I'm going to worry so.
All right. I guess what we could do, Tommy, is move some of your money around within your budget and pay for these and see how far down.
I'm going to buy out a gas or a thing out of the section.
See how far down the road we can get before we have to do a budget amendment.
Okay.
If that's reasonable, y'all, you know, it's, before we can tell them so. You heard, he tried to make, uh, that part. Yeah, that only gets silk, but protection county, so. Do I hear a, or do I hear a motion to approve, constable, to purchase, uh, these three items as together, actually four, counting the holster, uh, total amount of one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and three cents. Okay, the motion? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly. And these will be paid for out of the, out of his budget. And then we'll, we'll address any, uh, shortfalls as they go about. Any other questions or comments?
Just for clarification, Judge. You're just saying that he can order it and anything that comes in above of what he can purchase within his budget, we come back with a budget amendment?
Yes. He may have to make some line item adjustments to buy these. Then at some point in time, uh, down the road, if he runs out of fuel or runs out of money, then we'll understand that we'll have to do an amendment at that time.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, so he could go out and purchase all this equipment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Because the way the years go, you know, you, you know, no one's going to transpire the rest of the year.
True.
Some of his training money may not be spent, you know?
Yeah.
And things like that, so. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Can I be, you can.
Yes, sir. All right, our next item is Commissioner Precinct two.
Okay, so the...
You go as long as you don't bite.
I think I'm about to top everybody. So we have, uh, exceeded the five-year term for one of our motor grinders. Uh, I've received quotes both from Warren Cat and from John Deere. And so the amount, we're looking at getting another Warren Cat. The amount, uh, for the new motor grider will be two hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars, ninety-four cents. Uh, they're looking at the trade-in value for the previous motor grider of a hundred and forty-eight thousand. So the total after trade-in will be one seventeen, one oh five and ninety-four cents. And this does come with a full warranty cover the term, uh, for years, hours, and as well as mileage. As far as the optional attachments, we're not going with those on the bottom.
Okay. And you do have the money in your budget?
Yes, sir.
This is being purchased off the bottom?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you've heard, and you're going to put that in the motion?
Yes.
You've heard the motion, uh, on the sell price, uh, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, oh five, ninety-four, minus the one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar, uh, trade-in on, for a, uh, total cost of one hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents. Do I hear a second that this, uh, quit?
Do they get, uh, try to have, uh, for the...
I'm sorry.
Do they get your try-in allowance for the...
Okay, okay. Yes, sir, it's the same amount. Yes, sir.
So, I have a motion and a second. Any, any other questions?
Just to clarify, after you give your feedback on the, it's going to be the same?
I will, don't you? Because I have this right here. I apologize. After, uh, making copies of the wrong contract, I'm working on this, as we speak. Now, it's not on, I don't have it on here right now, but that was, that's the trade-in. The, uh, that is the trade-in amount that he was going with. Because now he did say that in five years, obviously, the cost of the motor grider will go up. So the total value will continue to go up.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, our next item is, uh, Mr. Greg Blue, is it blue or...
Yeah, blue, correct.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Greg Blue. I'm with Director of Project Development for Rodbridge Tower. And Mr. Kelly says I have five minutes. I'll keep it under five minutes. Uh, yeah, I wanted to introduce y'all today to, uh, our company and a project that we're looking at developing, a utility scale battery storage project. I want to explain a little bit about battery storage. And it's the, um, I would say the next level of tools that the Vercoff grid is using to help reliability for the grid. Yes, I'm not an electrician here, but somebody explained it to me. The best way to explain it is, they took a bathtub, okay? The grid has to remain at sixty hertz.